And I'd like to welcome Greg Lopez and also Angela Turnis from the mayor of Elizabeth. And I'll turn it over to you, sir, if you'd like. And we'll discuss future plans and things for Elbert County.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, you know what? I think it's good to just touch a little bit on the background so that those that may watch this later or people that are here, I can't remember how long ago it was, but I did come in front of the commission and offered that if there was anything that I could share or bring to light as it pertains to my experience as the mayor of Parker and that I would be more happy to do so. So recognizing that the county is going through a lot of changes, it's going through an evolution. There's a lot that I think a lot of people are struggling with as it pertains to what's happening to our county. So what I wanted to do was kind of give some background. A lot of people understand that I was the mayor, but there are two forms of government for municipalities. One is called the strong mayor and one's called a weak mayor. And what the weak mayor technically is, is that they're elected by the people, but they basically oversee and run the council meeting. Okay? They are the voice and face of the community, but they have no executive decisions whatsoever as it pertains to the day-to-day operations. A strong mayor is the chief executive officer. So when I was the mayor, I was not only the mayor, but I was the city manager. So all the department heads reported directly to me. The chief of police, buildings, zoning, public works, parks and rec, the administration, courts, the attorney, everybody reported to me. I decided where they got hired. I decided where they got fired. I was basically the day-to-day operations. The charter required for me to sit on every commission. I did not have the luxury to appoint a council member to sit on the commission. So I sat on the planning commission. I sat on the parks and rec commission. I sat on Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Governments, every economic development council that the town was a part of. And so I quickly learned everything there was to learn about a community and most importantly, how it all unfolds as you look into the future. Okay? So understanding master plans, you know, Parker at the time in 1992, Douglas County was the fastest-growing county in the nation. And if you drove around, if you were here, you remember how quickly it was growing. Parker was the fastest-growing town in the nation for its size, just to give you an idea. When I got elected, the population of the town of Parker was 5,000. In four years, it was 14,000. Okay? So as you can imagine, there was, I inherited a zoning community, 13 square miles, that had already been zoned for 100,000 homes. Okay? And so the population was going to be close to 150,000. And so there was a lot of dirt being moved constantly throughout the town, right? Parker Road was being widened by C.D., you know? And so a lot of construction, some of you may remember E-470, they called it the road to nowhere. You know, I used to tell them, hey, it does go somewhere. It ends in Parker. Right? And so, so understanding master plans, and I think a lot of people sometimes confuse what the master plan is or they neglect to fully embrace the purpose of the master plan. And it's more than what people see, at least in my opinion. It's more than the document itself. There's more to it than just what is written. You have to be able to understand the purpose of the master plan as well as what is the spirit and intent of the master plan. And unfortunately, a lot of times these master plans are written by consultants that have no clue as to what the community is all about. They basically look at trends, they look at population numbers, they look at transportation numbers, but they don't live in the community, so they don't have a history. They really don't understand, you know, what the sentiment is of the public. And so when you look at what's happening in Elbert County and what happened in Douglas County, the secret got out, basically, in Parker. And the secret's getting out about Elbert County. You know, everybody's starting to realize, wow, there's a community out here that may not be too far for us to raise a family and so forth. I remember very clearly, I got asked by a number of constituents back in the late 1990s. We met at J.C.'s Park and they came to me and said, hey, now that you're no longer the mayor of Parker, can you tell us, what can we do to stop Elizabeth and Elbert County from becoming Douglas County and Parker? I said, well, it's too late. They're like, what do you mean it's too late? I said, well, you let Safeway in. And because you let Safeway in, now all of a sudden, the moms and the wives are looking at how quickly they can go get a glass, get a gallon of milk, get eggs, get things for their family. When they were coming out here and someone would tell them, how close is the grocery store? They would say it's 20 minutes away. It's like, uh-uh. I'm not living 25 minutes away from a grocery store. This ain't gonna happen, right? Which is basically human nature, right? Moms and wives are protecting the nest and they want to be able to get back and forth. And so I told them, I say, you know, when you shut down the little grocery store that you had and you let Safeway in, it's changing the entire topography of what Elbert County is going to do. So be aware that you've already kind of opened Pandora's box. Now you must manage Pandora's box. Okay? So growth, a lot of people may know this, but a lot of people don't think about it. Every time there's a house built, every time there's zoning being allowed, you basically have made a decision that you're going to impact your schools, you're going to impact your parks, you're going to impact your roads, you're going to impact water, you're going to impact emergency services, you're impacting snow removal, you're impacting everything that provides to a community service, you know? And some people say, what's the big deal? We gotta grow. I'm not anti-growth. I'm here to tell you that it's important for us to do smart growth and development. It's gotta be smart, not uncontrollable. And what I'm seeing here in Elbert County is a little bit of chaos, not seeing some real thought process as to how are you developing the county and what is the future of the county gonna look like? Okay? As I was driving down here, just to give you an idea, as I was driving down here from Elizabeth, you look around as you're driving and you can't really tell, where's the industrial parks? What is this gonna look like 20 years from now? You know, is this what it's gonna look like and we're just gonna have more concrete companies, more storage companies, more tractor companies? What is this corridor gonna look like? And is this the front door to Kiowa? Is this the back door to Elizabeth? What is this section between these communities and what is it gonna look like? Right? And so this is what you are entitled, you've been, you've been asked, the citizens, to say, hey, give me an opportunity to develop the future of our county. And so I'm here to tell you, you gotta wear visionary glasses. The decisions you're making should not be based on an application. The decisions you're making should be based on what do you want the county to look like 20 years from now? Not today, 20 years from now. Okay? Because the residents are counting on you to have that vision and they're hoping that you're listening to them so that 20 years from now, everybody looks around and says, you know what? I am so glad I still live in Elbert County. You know, as I drive around Parker, you know, you've driven it and I scratched my head because like, why do they need so many car washes? Why do they need so many gas stations, right? Why do they need so many hotels? And everybody has a purpose as to what it is that they're trying to do. I'm here to tell you that the reason Castle Rock has been able to maintain its quaint character is because they took a leap of faith on the outlet malls. Now, they went through a lot of heat when they approved the outlet malls. I was mayor, so I saw the problems that Castle Rock was going through from its constituents. But what the people didn't realize is that we are bringing in people from Denver, Adams, Jefferson, all these other counties to leave their money in Castle Rock. And then they get to go home. And we don't have to worry about plowing the roads. We don't have to worry about public safety. This is an opportunity for us to grow our community in a respectful manner. I think Parker personally has lost its charm. Okay? I don't think Parker is the community that people would like to see, but hey, these are decision-makers. So I can tell you that one of the things you've noticed, and you don't see them that much because I think they've changed some of their rules, but that Five Globe lighting fixtures, you've seen them? Okay? That was the icon for Parker. It's still on their, on their website, still on their, on their business cards. What that was designed to do is anytime you see these posts, know that you're in Parker because that's our little trademark, right? And every development was supposed to have that, okay? To have some consistency as to what the community was gonna look like. So when I got there, you know, Parker was just growing, it was exploding. We had to deal with school impact fees. Highland Ranch was just starting, you know? So there was a lot going on in the entire county, like I said. It was the fastest-growing county in the nation, you know? And today, it's, some would argue, it's the richest county in the nation, you know? And so it is definitely growing, but I think if you talk to the Douglas County commissioners, they have a vision and they're pushing it hard as it pertains to, we want to become the anchor when it comes to technology and we want to outshine Denver. That's why they have Lockheed Martin, that's why they're growing some of those campuses, that's why they're offering a lot of incentives to different industries to come in. And so when I got there, I talked to people and I, I was a recent husband with small children. And so what I wanted to see in Parker was that old feel that if you were sitting in your living room and you had your front door open, you would hear children laughing and playing in the street. You would hear dogs. You wouldn't hear cars speeding by. It wasn't a traffic that you wanted to hear. You wanted to hear a community that was building their families and enjoying what the future of the community was going to be. And so we looked very closely at the quality of life of the residents, not the zoning, not the commercial, what is the quality of life that we want for our community? And what's gonna make up that quality of life? And we decided it was going to be the young families. Okay? So young families is what we wanted to bring into the community. And so parks, trails, baseball fields, all those things that a small up-and-coming family needs to be able to feel like, hey, this is a community that really cares about families, you know? I built the rec center. You know, if you look at the history of the rec center, it was one of the most contagious projects that the town ever had. Okay? I only voted as a mayor if there was a split vote. I never voted on any issue unless there was a split vote. Now, I had the ability to communicate with council and give them my opinion and give them my thoughts as to why are we doing this? Why are we doing it? Or should we do it? Should we not do it? But I never voted unless there was a split vote. Okay? And so for whatever reason, building the rec center was a split vote from start to finish, from the location to the design, to hiring contractors, to change orders, from going from, you know, a flat paint to glossy paint, to changing the carpet. Everything was a split vote, everything. It was so contagious that even if you go today to the rec center, you will not see a Brown's plaque of who the mayor was and who council members were that approved it. And the reason you won't see it is because if I would have authorized the purchase of that plaque, we would have gone over budget. And I was not gonna go over budget because I knew that would be another stain on the community. So I've been trying to tell the council members, maybe it's time you put a plaque up there. But these are the challenges that we went through, okay? These are the challenges that you're going through. Now, one of the things that I would tell you is that, you know, like I said, I inherited zoning of major subdivisions, right? I had three metro districts that were in bankruptcy, three. And that's when you look at metro districts, I caution you about approving a metro district as quickly as I've seen it in the past. Okay? Cottonwood was in bankruptcy. I was the president of homeowners association, okay? The reason it went bankrupt is because the development was not maintaining how many building permits that were issued on a yearly basis, which were connected to the bond debt. Just like any loan, right? You gotta show that you're generating money and the bondholders, if they're not getting paid, they're gonna foreclose on the property. Well, the foreclosure is on the subdivision. It's not on the town, it's not on the county, it's on the subdivision. And every individual resident's gonna have to pay based on their property to get that subdivision out of bankruptcy. So the Parker, the villages of Parker, Cottonwood and I can't remember the name of the other one. I think it's the little park, Indian Pipe, that area right there, they were all in bankruptcy because they weren't growing as fast. Now, one of the things that happened is I have a financial background, so I understand bonds, markets, interest rates. And so the banks decided to put us on a blacklist. The banks would not authorize any mortgages for anybody that was selling or buying. So they were basically trying to squeeze the homeowners to stay there. Okay? Well, being who I am, I told, I held a meeting with the bankers and I said, you better take us off your blacklist because if you don't, I'm gonna tell every homeowner, don't you dare pay your mortgage. It'll take them six months to foreclose on you, if not longer. Keep that money, save it, and then when you go and buy another one, I will write you a letter as the president of the homeowners association and tell why you didn't make your mortgage payment and because we're in bankruptcy and these guys aren't willing to work with us, you know? And so when I told them that, they decided, okay, maybe we need to come to the table and negotiate. And that's why now Cottonwood is able to say they're not in bankruptcy anymore. But metro districts for a lot of staff and a lot of developers, that's the magic genie, right? They tell elected officials, it's not gonna cost you anything. They're paying everything. Don't worry about it, right? It's all taxes, you know? They're gonna do the bonds. What people forget is that those residents are county residents or city residents. And I'm here to tell you, most developers and builders could give a rip about the community that they're building in. And I dealt with a lot of builders and a lot of developers, okay? There's a couple that truly care, but I would tell you, 90% could care less about what they're doing to the community. Your job is to determine who they are and who they're not. Okay? So let's talk about, you know, what did I do to help manage the growth that was happening at that time? And so one of the things that we looked at is how quickly these applications were coming in, right? Because remember, most of the zoning was already in place. And so developers were like, hey, I'm gonna bring in a plat, I need to build 500, I need to build 300, I need to build this, you know? And because there was already zoning in place, we first felt like we were obligated to, okay, we don't want to do this, but it seems like we have to. And then the more questions I asked, it came out that, no, you don't. You definitely do not need to do anything that a developer wants you to do. Okay? Property rights, just to give you an idea. So, and I'll go into the vision statement because I did look at the Elbert County Comprehensive Plan, which is basically the master plan. So one of the things that I realized as I was talking, remember, I was the city manager, okay? So I had access to the entire staff every single day, right? You may not have access to them as much as I did, right? Because I'm there and I'm their boss. So when I need reports, they bring me reports. It wasn't long before I realized that the zoning that had been approved was allowing seven units to the acre. Seven. Okay? Talk about congestion. Talk about zero or five-foot setbacks on side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. I mean, they're putting them in really tight. And you can see them in some of the subdivisions, right? If you go to Cottonwood and some of the older ones, you'll see sections where they're really compacted because they were built under those rules. Okay? And so what we were able to do is look at what can we do with approved plaits, approved zoning, prior decisions? And through case law and other situations, we amended all that. And I'm here to tell you, you can too. Doesn't matter what the other people have done. Okay? Now, you must do a special process, it's called the legislative perspective enactment, which means you gotta pass legislation, you gotta pass rules, okay? And actually do it through the commissioners or city council. Okay? You can't just give directive to the staff to do it. It's gotta be a legal process that says, we're gonna do this. Okay? And so here's what I did. In order to reduce the densities, I decided I was gonna increase park dedication. So instead of 10 acres for every 50 homes or whatever it was, we increased it. It's no longer 10 acres, we want 20. And the developers would cry about it and they scream about it. It's like, well, you're taking away, it's like, it's not my issue, man. I couldn't care less whether you're making money or not. That's not why I'm here. I'm here to create a community. And if you really believe in this community, then you'll follow the leadership of the people that got elected by the citizens. So we talked about detached sidewalks, attached sidewalks, we talked about setbacks, we talked about everything. When it was all said and done, and by the way, in order for us to do this effectively and efficiently, we put in an eight-month moratorium on building. No one could build a house in Parker for eight months. No one. And that is legal. I'm here to tell you, your staff and your attorneys may tell you, you can't do that. I'm here to tell you, you can, because we did it. And there's still case law that says you can't. Okay? I can tell that even my staff was pushing back, right? Why were they pushing back? I'm a firm believer they were pushing back because all of a sudden, they have to redo everything that they've done and they're looking at, wait a minute, I gotta go pull up that file and I gotta figure out how to apply the new rules to that file? The answer was yes, you do. Okay? Because we're not gonna allow building to continue haphazardly. Now, we used to do a lot of, what do they call it? Surety bonds, okay? Developer came in and said, we're gonna build X amount of roads or we're gonna do so much and it's gonna cost us a million dollars. It's like, okay. Now, you guys may remember the civil railroad fiasco, civil rail savings and loans. Okay? So again, right? Everything's going great, all of a sudden, the bond market collapses, right? And all of a sudden, you've got these subdivisions that aren't completed. And you've got roads that haven't been completed. You've got pipelines and water lines that just stopped, right? And so who had to fix all that? Cities did, right? Because it's a hazard, it's a liability. Counties have to fix it. You can't just leave it there, right? So we decided we're gonna do surety bonds and say, performance bonds. If this is what you're gonna do, we need you to put 100% cash, cash, in the bank. Not a liter of credit, cash, for 110% of what you're claiming you're gonna spend. Now, a lot of them were complaining, crying, saying, well, I can't do that. The answer was, then you don't build in Parker. Go build somewhere else. It's funny how they find the money. It's funny how they figure it out, okay? Because they know where the market is and they want to take advantage of the market. And so you, I always held the builders and developers, I held their feet to the fire. And I had no problem telling them, you know what? Go build somewhere else. I really don't need you to build more. Because the community can only accept so much, right? Schools, think about it. Fire districts, police protection. You know, my chief of police would tell me, mayor, I know that you guys just approved something on the other side of town, but our goal is to have a two-minute response time. Because if we don't get there in two minutes, someone's lives could be lost. And you just approved the subdivision, it's gonna take us four minutes to get to. Because I don't have enough officers to be patrolling the town where we can get to everywhere in two minutes. Okay? Right? Things you need to consider. The fire department, say, mayor, you know what? I know you wanna do this, but the streets need to be a little wider, you know? Don't let them park in the streets because when we bring our trucks in, we don't want to be figuring out how we're gonna pull in and where we're gonna get the hoses from, where's the fire hydrants, all that type of stuff. Okay? So there's a lot to be considered and it's not just the five elements that the zoning code says. If you notice, when you read the zoning code, it's very open up to interpretation. It's open up to interpretation. Staff interprets whether they believe it meets it. The planning commission interprets it whether they believe it meets it. You get to decide, the ultimate decision, whether it is, fits or doesn't fit based on the criteria. And your attorney should be your sword or your shield. If he says, I don't think that's right, and you believe in it, then you tell your attorney, you're gonna be my shield. Protect us. That's your job. You know, and there's nothing wrong with you going against the planning commission or your own staff. The staff wasn't elected, neither was the planning commission. You were elected. At the end of the day, the legacy is yours, not the planning commissions and not the staff. People will remember what happened during your administration, not anybody else's. Okay? So this is the burden that you asked for and the people gave it to you. So, you know, again, like I said, developers and builders had concerns that, well, you know what? We can't make money, you're causing our business models to not work right, our bondholders, our investors aren't gonna like this. It's like, you know what? I'm not here for your success. I'm not. I'm here for the success of the community. Legal concerns. You're gonna get all kinds of legal concerns, right? They're gonna tell you, I would encourage you, say, whatever legal concern, whatever staff tells you, you can and can't do, have case law presented with it. Do not believe anybody that works under you. Trust and verify. Trust them, but they better verify what's happening. That's the way we were able in Parker to get control of what was happening. And again, the only people that were upset were the builders. Homeowners weren't upset, you know? The residents weren't upset. They were kind of pleased that things were slowing down, right? I had battles REA over overhead lines. They didn't want to bury their lines. They wanted them up exposed, right? So all these electricity, right? When I drive down, what is it? County Road 17 in front of the high school, you know, and I started seeing that public service REA power station going up, it's like, okay, more houses, more growth because they're bringing in more power into Elbert County, right? And they're bringing in power based on the developments that have been approved, right? And so these are the types of things I can, I'm here to tell you, and I have case law, I still have the memos from my attorney when I was mayor. You know, property rights. You hear this stuff about property rights, okay? I'm here to tell you, let me ask you this. What is your definition of a property right? You have one? Do you have a definition of a property right? Well, I'm gonna give you mine. Do you have a definition of a property right?
A property right, in my mind, is two-sided. And I'll leave it at that.
I want it to be very simple, okay? Because I think it's important to just speak in simple terms. When it comes to zoning, a property right is, as a property owner, you have the right to change the use of your property. So if you want to go from ag to residential, that's your right. If you want to go from ag to commercial, that's your right. That's a property right. There is no property right connected to the number of units that you want to build. You don't have a right to say, I'm entitled to 400 homes. No, you're not. You're entitled to change the zoning of ag to residential. That's your property right. But the government gets to decide how much impact your property's gonna have on the overall community. So there is a real difference between a property right and zoning. And developers will tell you all the time, my staff was trying to tell me that when I first got there, well, it's a property right. So really? They have a right to build 700 homes on this 300 acres? Yes. Show me the rule. Show me the law. So there's a difference between property right. And so it's interesting that, at least that's the way I look at it, okay? And this is case law from the standpoint of what my attorney told me, and I have documentation to it, that says... that says, uh, this is how it works. So, the master plan, right? Uh, and it's kinda interesting, cause I did read the master plan, the comprehensive plan for, uh, Elbert County. And here's the vision statement, which I found very interesting, it's kinda buried on page fifty-three. Now, if this is a master plan, you would think the vision would be on page two. Right? Not fifty-three out of seventy-seven. But it's, it's in there, it's just way in the back. Okay? But I did find this statement interesting, it says, the vision statement describes the ideal future of the county, and includes the values that are important to county residents, and statements about quality of life and character. So here's, and it says, the Elbert County vision statement is as follows. Elbert County, being rich in heritage, has a vision where property rights are respected, and agriculture, commerce, industry, and residential growth are encouraged, thereby creating a path to economic prosperity. You know what I just read? Elbert County wants to be Douglas County. Elbert County wants to be Arapaho County. There's nothing unique about this vision statement that is unique about Elbert County. Nothing. It doesn't mention quality of life. Doesn't mention the rural character, right? It mentions agricultural. Now, the other thing I noticed, which is kinda interesting, uh, on page one, it does says, uh, that it, a county that wants to move ahead must know where it's headed and what it wants to become. I don't think Elbert County knows what it wants to be.
Agreed.
I think that's one of the problems. Elbert County has no idea what it wants to look like in twenty years from now. And I'm here to tell ya, the secret got out. I know a lot of the developers that you guys are dealing with. You know how I know? I dealt with them in Parker. They haven't gone away. Right? So, I know who they are, I know how they operate, I know how they think. Okay? It really is important for you, cause I'm here to tell ya, now, if they were here, I'd tell them, I don't think they care about Elbert County. I really don't. And if they say, well, we do, it's like, okay, actions speak louder than words. You know? And I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, but let's see what they bring to the table. Instead of them saying, well, we're bringing tax revenue. Well, tax revenue can only go so far. Right? Warranty on the roads is what, two years, three years? And then after the warranty's gone, who has to maintain them? Who has to plow them? Who has to make sure we fix the potholes? Right? So, they're like, okay, I'm gonna cover it for two years, but this subdivision's here, it'll be for a hundred years, so you guys are responsible for it for the next ninety-eight years. Okay? Right? Just know what you're doing as it pertains to all of that. Um, so, I also made sure that I worked very closely with the county. Okay? I believe that the county's wrong, and I could be wrong, and if I am, it wouldn't be the first time, and it won't be the last. Okay? The county should be encouraging development to go where the cities are, where the safe way is. Because remember, as they grow, they're all county residents. They still pay county taxes. It's not like, they don't, you don't get the money. Right? So, encouraging development closer to the economic hubs that you currently have. Right? To build the water lines, to build the sewer lines, to build the transportation corridors, to create real communities. Right? Uh, and we had some, Elbert, I mean, Douglas County has the same problems that Elbert County is starting to create. Right? Look at the pinery. Pinery's not close to anything. Now, all of a sudden, across the street, there's a bank, right? Why is there a bank now across the street from the pinery? And before long, there'll be a grocery store. Because all the development behind the hill, up on the hill, is starting to come in. Right? And they're connecting the roads. So, development brings commercial activity. The more houses you bring, why do you think McDonald's showed up? Right? Why do you think Taco Bell showed up? They're here because they see customers in volumes. Right? And they look at the master plans, and they look at what's going on, it's like, okay, this is a good location. You know, so you got the pinery, did you know that Stonegate's not part of the town? Of Parker? It is not part of the town of Parker. Stonegate is not. The boundary between Parker and Douglas County is the center line of Jordan Road. So, everything on the east side of Jordan is in the town of Parker, everything on the west side is Douglas County. Yeah. Okay? So again, you gotta be careful as to these developments, right? Community identities are important to cities and towns. Right? And so, you know, Gondolier Farms, I mean, there were so many subdivisions, for example, you guys are familiar with, um, uh, a high school on Bayou Gulch, Ponderosa High School. Right? You know that whole area across the street that is now the horse park? Right? I think it's three hundred and fifty acres. That was known as Gondolier Farms. It was zoned with commitments back in the late nineteen eighties for thirteen hundred homes on that piece of land. So, I was part of the team that removed the development rights out of Douglas County and put it into Parker at a lot lower density. We didn't transfer thirteen hundred, we transferred seven hundred. But guess who had to pay for that? The developer. Had to pay for that transfer of density. What are we trying to do? Bring the density closer to the communities. Right? You don't wanna have this hodgepodge type of thing. Cause look at the sheriff's department. Who's gonna go patrol independents? Right? Sheriff's. You know, who's patrolling, uh, Spring Valley? And they're here, their headquarters is here. Right? So these are all the things that you have to be taking into consideration, water's always been an issue. It'll continue to be an issue in the state of Colorado. You know, when I was mayor, the town of Parker owned the wastewater treatment plant. We owned it. Parker Water and Sand provided water. So we had an agreement with them. Right? They couldn't provide it without the water, without the water plant and sewer plant. So I had to negotiate because of bond issues and debt issues that the town was, had gotten itself into before I got there, was, we finally, I negotiated with Frank Jaeger, some of you may remember that name, some of you may not. I negotiated with Frank Jaeger for Parker Water, uh, the Parker Water and Sanitation District to buy the wastewater treatment plant. With the understanding that we also had to say on the cost of the tap fees and the sewer tap fees. Cause that's where the big costs come in for a lot of developers. Right? Twenty thousand here, thirty thousand there, and it's all buried in the ground. But that's the cost that small, uh, new homeowners are having to incur. So, I can tell you that, uh, I would encourage you to seriously look at putting a moratorium until you feel comfortable that you know exactly what the vision of this county's gonna look like twenty years from now. That you know clearly that there is enough water, and don't believe those hydrologist reports. You know? I, follow your gut, man. Nobody knows, nobody can see five miles into the ground and tell you how much water's down there. They can't. You gotta follow your gut that, okay, maybe there is water down there. I can tell you, when I moved out here, my wife was very nervous when we moved out here, she's like, do we have enough water? We're like, well, that's a good question. I don't know, cause it's got a well, right? I have a well, and a septic tank. I'm on the upper Dawson. Right? Now I'm hearing that people are trying to tap into the upper Dawson, it's like, uh-uh. I'm gonna have a problem if someone starts tapping into my lake.
So Greg, I asked my wife, I said, what do you think of when you hear the term three hundred-year water rule? She goes, oh, I think we got water for three hundred years. Okay, I just wanted to check. Right?
Well, look, a lot of people don't understand, look, eighty-three percent of our water that we use in Colorado comes from the snowmelt, not from the ground. Cause it costs a lot of money to pull water out of the ground. And you gotta do a lot of filtration, a lot of treatment. You guys attended the Parker Water and Sanitation tour. You know, look at those things, man. They're massive. Right? And yet, they're going out to Washington County to bring water to Parker. You got people trying to get water from the San Luis Valley, from Alamosa, up to Douglas County. And yet, everybody said, we have enough water.
Why are they going to Sterling to get water and piping it down if there's plenty of water? I was wondering that same thing.
Right? Douglas, Douglas County has, hey, you gotta have a hundred years or three hundred, whatever it is. So why all of a sudden are they having to go to Alamosa, to the San Luis Valley to bring water up to? All I'm saying is, nobody knows how much water is down in the ground. Okay? But you gotta make good informed decisions to the best of your ability. The one thing that my wife was happy about, cause I knew the waters, the state water engineer at the time, so I went to go talk to him, I say, hey, I'm about to buy property in Elizabeth, out in Elbert County. My wife's concerned about the water. He goes, what's your address? So I told him. And he went through his map, he goes, ah, you don't have to worry about it. So why's that? He goes, let me show you. So he brought out the map, the water map, and he's, I'm right in the middle of the lake. He's like, Greg, you don't have to worry, you're in the middle of the lake. Now, the people that need to worry are the ones that are on the edge of the lake. Because as the lake starts drying, right? You'll know wells are going dry, cause they're at the edge. Right? But if you're in the middle, you'll know that if people start, their wells start going dry, there's a problem. Right? I think that's why a lot of people are managing the wells, I mean, that's why people are looking at, hey, we need to monitor these wells, cause we really don't know where the water's going. We just know people are pulling out water. Right? And so water's always gonna be a big issue for you guys, uh, and that's for the entire state. Okay? Uh, you're probably gonna have to start dealing with CDOT here not too quickly. Right? Cause the congestion that's going on the highway, right? They're gonna need to widen it. Right? You, you may start having failing lights, uh, failing, uh, signals. The, the signal on Main Street and Parker Road was at an F when I got there. An F. Why? Because people were taking risks. Right? And so a lot of fender benders, not deaths, cause you're not going fast. Right? So, but there's a lot of fender benders, and it's failing. So, the Uniform Traffic Code has guidance as to the ratings of the traffic signals. One of the things that I find very disturbing to me with the Uniform Traffic Code is that the only time that you can pull, and hopefully this has changed, but I know when I was there, in order to put a light, you had to have a casualty. That was one of the criterias. Someone had had to die at that intersection before you were allowed to put a signal. Otherwise, they believed a four-way stop sign would accommodate it. So, how do I know you're gonna be dealing with CDOT? If you remember in nineteen, early nineties, where Safeway is today? You know where it was? It was across the street. Where Goodwill is. That's where Safeway was. You know why they moved to the other side? Cause people did not wanna cross over the road to stop for groceries. It's like, I'd rather pull right in and right out. Right? Staying on the same side of the highway. Right? The battles that I had with CDOT, and I still remember the gentleman's name, you know, was, you know that turn-in into the shopping center? That is way too close to the light on Main Street and Parker Road. Way too close based on their design standards. We negotiated they would be there for at least eight years, and we would monitor the accidents that were happening. The good thing is, people are at least very conservative when they're trying to make that left-hand turn into that shopping center. Cause there's not a whole lot of accidents, I'm aware, that are happening right then and there. That's why it's still open. So, when, and I hear a lot of residents say, hey, well Greg, we need tax, we need tax revenue. And my answer is, why? Why does the county need tax revenue? Because I know a lot of people, I know, I moved out here to get away from concrete roads. You know, hey, get a truck, man. You know, deal with your car. Right? That's the trade-off. I remember a lot of, you're gonna deal with this, right? You're, and you may be facing it faster than the county. They want city services with country living. You can't do that. Ain't gonna happen. You need to decide, you want the country style or the urban style? Cause once you go down that path, it's very hard to come back. You know? So, one of the things that I did to try to slow down people from coming out to Parker is like, we would not plow subdivisions. Wouldn't. Unless there were seven inches on the ground and it was still snowing. And that people were like, we can't get out, it's not my issue, man. My issue is to get the collectors and the major arterials and minor arterials cleared out. Your job is to get out of your subdivision. It's not mine. Because our plows have to be careful that we're not hitting cars. Right? Cause you hit a car, and where are you gonna plow this snow? Where? To the end of the cul-de-sac? And block another driveway? I mean, where are you plowing this road, this snow? Right? So, I, we passed it, hopefully still there, it's like, uh-uh. Six inches and still snowing. And maybe you'll see a plow in your neighborhood. Otherwise, you're never gonna see it. And what do we know about snow removal? That is a one-line item you can never budget for. You can never budget for it. Sometimes you, two storms, your budget is gone. And then you gotta pay for more. Right? So, I don't know if you guys have any specific questions, cause I can add, I mean, you know, oh, here's another thing, vested property rights. Wait till you hear that one. It's vested. No, it's not. It's vested for three years. It's in the CRS. And you guys can change that. That's the beauty about being in government. Okay? There's a process, and you'll have people that'll scream and holler, it's kinda like taking away their allowance. Right? It's like, you know what, but you are in control of the future of this county.
A lot of great information.
Greg, when you said you halted all building permits, so that's after site plans were done and approved? And then you stopped it basically from then to where they were coming to, to get a building permit?
So here's the deal, if, if you've got everything approved right now, where they're actually at the point where they're able to pull building permits, then I would caution you and say, you know what, just bite the bullet on that one. Let them pull the building permits on those areas that that's all they're waiting on. It's still gonna take them six, eight months, right? Maybe two years to build out, you know, those two hundred homes or wherever it is. But if they're not at that point, everything freezes, everything. You know, you tell your staff, don't process that application. Nope. Right? Do not, do not accept more applications.
So that would, that would be my
It's a moratorium.
Thought process is, once an application's been submitted.
You do not have to go see it all the way through. You do not.
So, Greg, we had concerns about growth, and you came into that meeting a couple, maybe a month or so ago now. And that's why we invited you back, we appreciate, um, the information that you're sharing with us, and we appreciate your time. Um, and one of my concerns, and during the campaign, and I still have it, is I wanted to come into office, and I know Byron did too, and we wanted to update our comprehensive plan. Okay? And then following that process, and based on citizen input. I didn't want it to be what Mike Buck says, or what Byron says, or what Dallas says. I wanted it to be based on citizen input, what they saw as a vision for the county, like you talked about. And following up with that, once we updated the comprehensive plan, updated our rules and regulations. Well, now I'm finding out from the consultant that that process is gonna take anywhere from ten to fourteen months to complete just the comprehensive plan, and then if you're gonna update your rules and regulations from that, you're looking at eighteen to twenty-four months before you complete that process. So I don't think we have eighteen to twenty-four months, we got pipelines full of applications now. And we're currently at ninety-three hundred, or three times over what our housing needs assessment called for, kinda like when you walked in and you said, well, we got a hundred thousand already in the pipeline. So it's similar to that on a smaller scale. And my, my thought process is, what should we be doing now? I mean, you recommended a moratorium, but should we be working on our rules and regulations in the meantime, which we have started doing? I mean, you recommended a moratorium, but should we be working on our rules and regulations in the meantime, which we have started doing? And just start hitting that hard while we're working on this? Or how should that next step for us look?
Well, let me first tell you this. It's, it's kinda interesting that your consultant is telling you it's gonna take that long. Here's what I'm hearing when they say that. They got other clients that are paying them more money than you are. And so, they're gonna give their junior planners an opportunity to cut their teeth on this. It should not take fourteen months to put together a master plan. You pretty much have it.
It could be an update to this one.
Yeah, but it won't take fourteen months.
Yeah.
Okay? Look, you can go out there and aggressively talk to the community, probably within ninety days, to the community, right? If you're aggressive and you're, "Hey, we need to know, because we're moving," right? Building and writing the document should not take more than two months. They're smoking something. I know it's legal, but they're smoking it. Uh, the interesting thing for me is that staff has the knowledge. My staff did it when I was there in Parker. They're professionals. They know how to write master plans. They should, right? They know how to look at, uh, projection of forecasting of growth. You know, most of these consultants, where do they go to get information from? The staff. That's where they go, right? So, my planning director, I gave him the assignment, "You're gonna rewrite the entire master plan." It did not take him fourteen months, okay? We were able to do it in eight months. At the same time, because he's the planning director, he knows the zoning codes, he was modifying, suggesting changes to the zoning codes that when it came in front of council, we had both. Here's the revised master plan, and here's the revised zoning codes. Why are they coming together? Because it's the people that are implementing this. Instead of having the consultant say, "Well, you should do this." And they haven't talked to the planning director, they haven't talked to, they're like, "Okay, how's that gonna work?" Right? They resolve it in enough time for you to know that everything's here. And here's the other thing, guys, look, a master plan is something that is a guide. You can always change and revise it. You don't have to wait five years. You don't have to wait five years. You know, that's the norm, right? Because that's what the consultants will tell you. You know, I noticed that, I was reading this, and do you know that the projections from the state demographer are already off? We haven't even met them.
We were.
And yet, everybody back then was planning on, "Hey, look, in 2025, this is the population, so let's get those building permits coming through, let's get all this zoning coming through." Like, timeout, man. What? So what if you're only seventy percent to where you should be? Because maybe it slowed down, maybe the economy shifted, right? Why get ahead of the projection? Again, trust and verify. Trust what you're reading, but use your gut, and all you gotta do is drive around, right? Drive around, talk to your building department, "How many building permits did you issue this week? How many are they building?" Right? You know, Dr. Cog, I could go to Dr. Cog and get all your numbers. Why? Because you have to report to Dr. Cog. How do you think Dr. Cog determines the master plan, the tip? They need to know where all the developments happen. And they're projecting three, five years down the road. I knew there was, I knew it wasn't gonna take long between, when there was gonna be another light on Parker Road. You know, they're putting another one up? So now, now I think there's nine lights on Parker Road. Within Parker, okay? The new one that they're putting on, it'll be flashing here about the next seventy-two hours, is the one right at the bottom of the hill on the other side of Dairy Queen, okay? In between Lincoln and Pine Drive, there's that bank, right? I forget the name.
Goodyear.
Right, the Goodyear, right? There's a light there, okay? It'll be flashing probably in the next seventy-two hours. Why? Because people are trying to come out and go over three lanes of traffic to get to the other side. And Parker Road can't be widened anymore. I mean, it's stuck. You got three lane on both sides now. It's a major highway. And it's carrying probably seventy thousand vehicle trips a day, if not more.
Hey Greg, can you, and you're familiar with Elbert County, so the EDZ zones that we have here in Elbert County. You know, we got people that are listing their property on MLS saying, "Oh, we're in an EDZ zone, it's worth double what, you know, a, a similar property might be worth that's not inside the EDZ zone." What authority do we have to maybe change that makeup of, of where those EDZ zones are?
You have full authority, full authority.
Okay.
You just gotta do it through legislation, right? The county commissioners have to say, "Hey, we're modifying the ED zone, we're modifying it."
Okay, so there's no liability as far as, oh, wait a minute, I, I, I
They're gonna claim that, they're gonna claim it.
Okay, they're already claiming it.
Right. Why? Because they believe they have a property right. You don't have a property right. What's your property right? What are we taking away from you, right?
They're taking away the money that the increased value of that zoning created. When it was, when it was zoned that way, it created more value to that property in the mar, in the marketplace.
And that's why builders are coming out and developers are coming out to Elbert County. Look, I don't know what they're paying an acre. Let's just assume they're paying nine thousand dollars an acre for ag, right? You zone it residential. And maybe they put two units to the acre. But every lot is sixty thousand dollars. So they're making money, that's what I'm telling you. These guys are not necessarily interested in the community. They're not. And you can change that. Look, I sat on the board of E470, okay? We designed the alignment of E470. And people started zoning, counties, communities, zoning around the alignment. Okay, we hadn't even built the road yet. And then, guess what happens? Someone discovers a, an abandoned eagle's nest in a tree. And they're like, "You can't build the road now." "What do you mean, we can't build the road?" Supposedly, an eagle can come back to its nest. It can't be officially abandoned unless it's been abandoned for ten years. Then you can consider it abandoned. So what do you think we did? We moved the road. Two miles in, all those landowners were pissed. But we're not there for the landowners. You have every right, and this is where your attorneys, right? Look at the statutes. I'm here to tell you, you have every right to redo whatever map, whatever zoning district you wanna redo. Okay? Because they don't have a property right. They were going off the vision of another group. And you're not forced to follow the vision of prior elected officials. You're not. I mean, if that was the case, then why do you have county commissioners? Right? Because everybody already pre-designed what the county's gonna look like, so why, why deal with it? You have every authority, every authority to do it. But know this, I ran into it in my team too, right? Staff was, they're gonna drag their feet, they're gonna try to tell you no. Happened to me. Until I told them, "Show me the law." "I don't wanna hear your opinion, I don't wanna hear what you think, I wanna hear the rules." And they said, "Well, the rule says we can't." "Okay, let's change it." "What do we need to change it?" "Gotta take it to council." "Let's take it to council." Change it. Modify it. That's what the, that's what I wanna see you guys do, right? I'm just, I'm just a constituent, but I can see the future, right? One of the worst areas that you guys, not you, but the county's gonna have to deal with is Independence. That is your Highlands Ranch. That is your Highlands Ranch over there. Okay? And it's hurting Elizabeth. Because all that, you think anybody from Independence is gonna drive back to Walmart or Safeway? No! They're gonna stop on the way home.
What, what do you think about these other developments? ECE, DC West, off, they're in the middle of nowhere, out on Kaiba Bennett Road.
Yeah, my question is like
How is that, how does that work?
Exactly. How does that apply to the vision? How does that apply to the vision of our county? Well, I can tell you, because there is no vision, it's just popping up. Because developers say, "Well, you should do this," right? And they, they sell the leaders on the revenue. They sell the leaders on, "Look at this, we're gonna provide affordable housing." What's affordable? I read the PUD of Independence. Really? You think that's affordable? You got six metro districts.
I saw
In Independence, six.
I saw a home, starter home, thirteen hundred and I think seventy, seventy-seven square feet. So small, three bedroom, two bath, thirteen hundred square feet. The metro district fee was sixty-four hundred and change, plus nine hundred dollar HOA. So they were over seven thousand a year for the metro district and their HOA, just in a start, small starter home.
Right.
And when it said metro district, it said no. I know for a fact that subdivision is in a metro district. And they're advertising it as if it's not in a metro district. So I got a problem with that, I just noticed it yesterday or the day before, and that's gonna be an issue.
So let me ask you this. Let's hope it never happens, let's, because I don't wanna see it happen. But let me ask you this. In Cottonwood, I'll go back to my situation. The residents in Cottonwood, who do you think they were pissed off at? The developer or the town? Why? You guys approved it, man. You guys approved it. And you're my representative. And you can try to explain all day long, "Well, the developer said, and it's metro district, and it works, it's a quasi-judicial government type of thing. After so many times, you can run for the, for the metro district, but for now, the metro district is doing all the bond issues based on the developer and his friends." They couldn't care less, man. Hey, I'm about to go bankrupt over my house because you guys approved this. They couldn't care less who built the house. They couldn't care less who the developer was. They're gonna hold the county accountable. And that's why I'm saying, guys, everybody thinks being elected office is kinda cool, and, but there is a heavy burden that when we run for office and we get elected, we must recognize that we must have the courage and the strength to tell our staff and builders and developers, "No, uh-uh. Come back in two years, we're not ready for you." They'll go find somewhere else to go. You know, you drive around anywhere in the state. And the state of Colorado is booming in residential. Why? Because the word out there is, "We need more housing." But they're not building what I consider starter homes. Everything, I think the average price today in the urban corridor is probably fi, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to buy a house. I don't know what it is here in Elbert County, because I've been in my house for twenty-six years. But think about it, right? We're gonna build a community and yet we're forcing our young couples, our young families to go somewhere else because they cannot afford to live here. And don't buy the, don't drink the Kool-Aid, I've heard, I've talked to some people, they're, "Greg, we need more, we need more jobs, we need more employment, we need this, we need that." It's like, "Look, guys, here's the way I look at it. No matter what you try to do here, unless you wanna become Douglas County, and if that's your goal, go for it, right? But we have the same, you're gonna have the same problem with those industries that you have with the schoolteachers. Because what are they, what is everybody looking for? A bigger paycheck." You can't blame them, right? Hey, if I teach in Elizabeth and I'm making thirty-five thousand a year, Cherry Creek is offering me fifty-seven thousand a year. Hmm, yeah, I think I'll go over there. Can I still keep my family here? Yeah, probably, maybe not, maybe you will. Hey, but we're leaving, right? They're chasing the American dream. I think Elbert County should offer the American dream of open land, open space. I'm talking to ranchers. There's a reason why our beef prices are going up. They're losing ranchland to developers. And they're not able to graze as much as they used to. You should think about, anytime someone comes in for development, was that land being used for grazing before? What was that land being used for? If it was for hay, did we just impact the hay industry? Did we just impact the ranchers and the farmers? You get to make the decision, but ask those questions. Because everything's shifting, everything's changing. I mean, they're building that new development, you see it already in Douglas County, right next to Singing Hills and Hilltop. Right? Yeah, you know?
How many homes is that, do you know?
Couldn't tell you. Roundabouts, guys, I hate them. Some people love them, I, not me. Because you can't get big vehicles around that roundabout. Trailers, horse trailers, hay, uh-uh.
Car trucks.
But again, roundabouts, urban, that's the connection, right? You start looking at Elizabeth now, what do you see? A Walmart, Safeway, Taco Bell, you know, a McDonald's, Mrs. Parker, twenty years ago, right? Okay, because it's happening. But when it comes to zoning and districts, you have full authority to redraw your maps. You're not obligated to, someone sold a property thinking it was gonna be zoned, this, sorry, should've built it when the zoning existed.
Mr. Lopez, a question for you, sir, if I may. Um, you know, talking about the master plan, the comprehensive plan, and, um, you know, looking at, you know, what Elbert County is going to be, uh, you know, twenty years, uh, that, that vision, uh, creating, um, you know, that quality of life and establishing the identity. Um, as, as many of us know, the key piece of that is aligning your regulations or your code to that vision. And you illustrated that, um, you know, with your example in Parker and your planning director, et cetera, and doing both, you know, simultaneously, et cetera. Do you have anything, um, additional, uh, ideas, tips, et cetera, as to ensure that those two align? Comp plan and the regs? Like any tips for, for us?
Yeah, it's pretty simple. It's simple, but most people don't do this. The decision-makers need to read both documents. Gotta read them. And cross-reference them, right? I mean, we're the ones that, once the document is done, we can't say, "We're done, put it on the shelf, you guys deal with it," right? You gotta read it, and as you're looking at this, saying, "Wait a minute, how does this apply to streetscape? How does this apply to trees? How does this apply to, uh, site distance, heights of buildings, right? There is no magic pill. You just gotta have people that care enough to read the documents and ask the right questions. And that's why every zoning code can be amended. You don't have to do the entire zoning code in one time. You can say today, right, your community development, the management, et cetera, "I think we need to modify this one reg on all these four hundred pages." Like, "Okay, what is it?"
And then re-record it, because every time we make a change, we have to re-record it.
That's fine, you know what?
Re-record it.
Pay the two hundred bucks, pay whatever it is, right? Because you're protecting your community. No one's gonna question you and say, "Well, why do you keep doing it?" Well, it's either because, you know what, we, no one ever read it, so we're trying to correct it as we go, or there were three or four that got through. And we really didn't understand how the develop, because here's what happens, right? You got applicants come in, it's like, "Well, wait a minute, it says this, this is the way I interpreted it." Like, "That's not what it says." "Well, it's not clear enough." "What do you mean it's not clear enough? It's clear enough for me." Right? And like, "Okay, maybe there's a word or two." Instead of "will," it should say "shall." Right? You gotta start closing those doors a little bit, if they come up and say, "Well, that's not what I'm reading out of this."
We see that. We see that a lot.
Right. So, I mean, there's no real secret to it, you know? And this is the beauty of, of a community, right? It's, things shift, right? We just gotta be able to shift with it, but ultimately, we gotta make sure that the vision, and the vision that I would encourage you to look at, what do you want this to look like twenty years from now? Not five.
Well, and that's the thought process with, with updating the comprehensive plan, not our three vision, but the community vision.
Here's the thing, I mean, think about it, so
And that takes a little bit of time to get that community vision, but
It doesn't. Look, how long it, I'll, I'll give you a bet, okay? This vision, this comprehensive plan that was done in what, twenty eighteen? You look at all the people that were involved, right? It's got all the people, right? How long it took? All the community meetings, right? And listen to what it says. "A vision statement describes the ideal future of the county and includes the values that are important to county residents, values that are important to county residents, okay? Statements about quality of life and character." And yet, the vision statement that got adopted is Elbert County being rich in heritage. Is that a value? Is that quality of life? What is that? Has a vision where property rights are respected. Okay? Is that a vision? Agricultural, commerce, industry, residential growth are encouraged. Well, who doesn't want to see their community grow a little bit? Thereby creating a path to economic prosperity. This is Douglas County. And yet, everybody approved it. Where's the quality of life statement? Where's the value statement? There's nothing here about families, young families, there's nothing here about protecting the agricultural or the, um, facade of our communities. Right? Remember when we first passed gaming in Colorado? And Cripple Creek and Blackhawk and Central City, like, we need money to preserve our, our historic mining towns. Does it look like mining towns up there now? Nothing but land of casinos. Again, a plan is only as good as the people that are implementing it. If I, I looked at this and I shook my head, like, wow, this got through people? It even tells you what the vision statement should have. Quality of life statements, values. I can't find it, maybe, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I can't find it in the vision statement of the county. So, you guys are at a crossroads, but I think now is a good time to put the brakes on and let the entire world know, uh-uh, we're not going to jeopardize the future of our counties and the, the future of our constituents because someone thinks they need to make a buck. Right? And it's not going to be easy, trust me. They'll threaten you with lawsuits, they'll threaten you with, whatever. You know? You just got to be strong and courageous that you're going to win the day. Because the law is on your side. And that's why they don't want you to know the law. That's why they don't want you to, look, I have, look. Hage Phillips and Maloney. Okay? Back in 1993, ability of Parker to downzone property and require additional parkland. Case law, information, it can be done. Boulder was the first one to prove, the Supreme Court said, Boulder, you can do whatever you want. Why is Boulder, Boulder? Because they put a lot of regulations on what they will allow, what they won't allow. Okay? I, I mean, it's out there, these things haven't changed, right? About how do you use the rules to make sure that you're building a community that everybody can be proud of? But it's hard work, not easy work. So, I mean, and again, I mean, and don't trust me, validate it. You know, trust what you're hearing, but verify it. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I know what the law says. And I think, uh, you and your directors, everybody should be asking the question, why can't we do that?
We have been, we are.
Yeah, why?
Yeah.
Why can't we do that? And don't think, well, we've never done it before. Well, that's not what I'm asking. Show me the law. Or change it. Right? And they say, Greg, uh, they say, Commissioner, we have a statute that says we can't do that. Whose statute is it? Us or the state's? It's ours. Okay, let's change it. Modify it. That's another mistake that a lot of people believe is that you got to live by the decisions of the former administration. You don't have to. If you, I mean, President Trump is showing you, I couldn't care less what the prior president did, I'm changing it all. You have the same power and the same authority. And yeah, people are going to, you know, people are like, well, you just took my retirement away from me. Well, again, I'm not here for your retirement, man. You sold the property, you already made money from it, the developers and the investors, shame on them. If they were really committed to building, they would have been here already. And so, the planning commission, here's what I'd tell you about the planning commission, guys. The planning commission should always put requirements, restrictions, or ask for more than what's on the piece of paper. Because if they say, well, it met the criteria, then my answer to them is, so why do we need you? Because the planning, the planning director, the county manager should know whether it met the criteria or not. Why do we need a planning commission? The planning commission is your voice to say, we want more, we want more. They say, well, we met the park dedication. Okay, I don't care. I want more. Why? Because of this. And they should come to you with conditions of approval. More than just what they're doing. Used by right, you guys could modify every list on the used by right and used by special review. You have full authority to do that. And a lot of people don't understand the used by right and used by special review. Used by special review means that they have a year to prove that it's not going to be, uh, detrimental to the community. But if it is, guess what? They lost their zoning. That's why it's a used by right, I mean, special review. Because you're reviewing it. And if it didn't do what you were hoping or you misinterpreted what they were doing, they're in violation of the zone code, of the zone. That's why it's there.
That's why we need that report I asked you about earlier.
So, I mean, and it could be as simple as, I mean, I'll give you a perfect example. I asked the planning commission on a development, a rezoning on a piece of property next to my house. And I asked the commissioners and the planning commission, I'd said, I said, I'd like for you to put a condition on this approval. They're just, what's that? I put, I would ask that you put a condition that the gate that they took off to allow traffic to go in there, to do the survey and to do all this other stuff, that they put the gate back up. They looked at me like, well, why would we do that? Because it's my community and I don't want to see those cars going back and forth, and that gate was there, just asking me to put the gate. Today, that gate's still down. But you can do that as a condition of approval. We're going to approve this, but you put that gate back up. You can say, we're going to approve this, but I want you to redo the entire fence. I don't want to see barbed wire fence. You can put whatever condition you want. It's up to the developer to accept it or not. You're in the driver's seat. And they say, well, I can't do that. Well, then I guess you're not approved. But the board must be united. But the planning commission and you have full authority to make whatever requirements and conditions you want.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that and appreciate you coming down today with everything, a lot of good information.
I know it's a lot, you know, and it's, uh, look, I'll leave it with this. Um, the word's out there, the secret's gotten out. Builders and developers are feeling that we can go to Elbert County and we can get things done that we can't get done anywhere else. Because they're not as familiar with the zoning codes and regulations as other municipalities are. And it's only because you're going through the development of, you're growing, right? You never had to deal with these issues before. And so now that you're having to deal with them, like, wait a minute, and they're coming at you fast. And you have the right to slow it down.
Well, to your point about 86, between Kiowa and Elizabeth, I mean, I drive it every day and it's like, it's not what we want to see.
Yeah, I read on the master plan that the I-70 corridor is supposed to be the light industrial. That's in the comprehensive plan. You guys know that?
I've read it, yeah.
Like, hey, if that's the industrial corridor, then why are we building it here in between Kiowa and Elizabeth? Go to I-70. Right?
We just recently had some discussions about that out there, so, yeah.
Yeah. And it makes sense because all the truckers, all the heavy equipment wants to get on the highway and get out of here.
Yeah.
And you put heavy traffic, right now, I'm going to tell you, you're probably building in your own communities, you're probably building, even CDOT, I bet you, they're building the, the high, 83, what is it, 86?
Through here, 86.
86. Probably their, um, asphalt, maybe eight inches thick. But you put a big semi on there? You're putting a lot of pressure on that 10 inches or eight inches of asphalt.
Those concrete trucks.
Right? Yeah, that concrete plant? Those are heavy freaking trucks. And they're destroying the road.
To your point, we're at the crossroads, as you said, and it's, it's, uh, the weight's going to be on our shoulders to get this thing done, so we're rolling up our sleeves and we're working together closely and, uh.
If there's anything else that I can, I mean, again, right, take it for what you will, it's my experience, right? I'm not going to be offended if you guys don't, you know, but I think it's important for you to recognize that if there's a, if there's a time for commissioners to really look at the future, now is that time.
Agreed.
Because it truly is shifting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Betcha.
All right, and with that, we'll, it's 3:53, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.